Good evening. Today is Tuesday, September 25th. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 11, 2018 regular meeting?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? And with one correction on timing, and they've been made, so a motion to approve as amended?
So moved, second.
All those unanimous, that motion passes. We have an opportunity for public comment. If anyone in the public would like to comment? Seeing none, we move on to reports and discussions. We go over to our friends from Dutchess Bosis. This is a bit of a strong of this orientation, this works for everyone. Can you hear me okay?
So thank you very much for having us this evening. We will have an opportunity to talk about our capital project. And we have Dr. Booley and the board. Sherri and I, sorry, Wesley and I, will present that information this evening. My name is Nora Merritt, and I am the Executive Director for Home Resources with Dutchess Bosis. I've been with Bosis for just about 20 years, so a long time, and it's a really wonderful opportunity to present this particular project. The project is basically three different things that are very important to you. One, it is a cost-neutral project. Sherri will share some information about that when we arrive at that. This is a possibility, an opportunity to create real connection between college and careers within our county for our students. And it is about providing flexible space, flexible learning environments for the students of Dutchess County. And when we talk about students of Dutchess County, it's important to remember that Bosis doesn't have students. Our students are your students. They come to us for part of their day or the whole day. But I can tell you that Rhinebeck sends about 25 students to our programs, three of which are engaged in our special education programs. One at the Soul Point Center, one at the Alternative High School, and one in our industry programs. You have 22 students coming to us via CTI, as I've mentioned earlier. They're very happy on the bus on their way here. They include students who attend auto mechanics, animal and plant science, construction trades, cosmetology. You have five culinary arts, nursing, four small engines, four trade electric, one in TV video production, and two in welding. So that's a really nice cross-section of programs that we currently offer. And that's the basic. So we want to do three things with this project. We want to renovate, relocate, and recondition. Renovate the CTI building itself, and I'll illustrate that with the renderings in the short order. We want to relocate, welcome the Alternative High School student on campus to have a consolidated school environment, and recondition some of the states in the Soul Point Center, which is now being used partially for professional development, and it actually houses our services and operations team as well. There'll be some restructuring there, reconditioning. So this illustrates what we're up against. This is a piping system that's above the heads of the students at CTI, and it's really just 50 years of wear and tear. I wouldn't say it has left because we're very mindful of what we need to accomplish with our capital projects locally every year, but this is an illustration of what happens over time. Again, we haven't had a capital project in over 50 years. I can tell you that just about five or six years ago, we celebrated our 50th anniversary. So that means ever. We haven't had a capital project really in a long time. So this just illustrates that sort of condition. Here, what you're looking at is a classroom in CTI, and certain things that you want to... No. One, it's a classroom, this is the lecture setup, as you can see. And the lab section of this classroom is right to the left. You see that blue bar that runs down? This is an auto class. That blue bar that runs down, the left of that is where we have the applied learning, the hands-on learning labs. And this classroom setup is kind of open and closed every day. There are no desks. It's shared space, certainly that has to go away when the cars and women out. And also, the technology is really just not what it needs to be in this kind of environment. It's not conducive to way for students to learn. It certainly isn't good for the equipment. You can imagine the dust and the action that happens in a lab environment and having that technology in the same space, how it kind of diminishes the life of the technology itself. So this is kind of where we're at in the Saul Point, in the CTI classrooms. This is where we want to be. So this is a rendering of a classroom, a group of classrooms. On the ends, you'll see that those are lab setups. In this rendering, to the right, it's an add classroom. To the left, it's a personal training perhaps classroom, where they can do the hands-on work. In the center, is a more flexible learning environment, inclusive of some offices, where they can share and program into that classroom the learning. So the technology is best, they have desks, which would be nice. So this kind of shows you and illustrates how we're looking to create flexible learning environments throughout the whole project. This is just one section. And again, it is about flexible space. So this is the marquee that sits outside of our Alternative High School on 900 Dutchess Turnpike. As you can see, we're number one on the list, but below that is a whole series of fabrication, manufacturing, steelwork. It's really warehouse and industry space. It's not school space. We've, for 28 years, rented this space, and the space is meant for industry. On any given day, you'll have big tractor trailers driving into loading docks to unload or to pick up. You have lots of traffic going around the building as the fabrication industry shop is back there. If you look at this picture, you can see that's the exterior of our school, which is a common exterior to the warehouse. If you look closely, on the right hand side, you'll see gray doors. That's the entrance and exit for our students who come out to the outdoor plate area. To the left is a set of loading docks in the doorway, I suppose that was. That's where the trucks come in and out. So we are very particular about who we let into our building. We think of our teachers. We have visitors sign in and out, but we have no control over what happens in the warehouse section of this building, which is quite a large footprint, actually. So the safety concern that we have is great, and there's really no way to correct that in this space. So this specs, it's a $36.8 million proposal. It's an integration of 60,000 square feet, which is a consolidation of square feet, I believe is 20,000 square feet less than that of the Alternative High School beta site now. It's a consolidation of space, but not a loss of program, because the flexible space setting allows for more inhabitant and less square footage. We can establish a high-tech conference space, which I'll also point out to one of the renderings in just a minute, and improve that security. ADA access is important to us, as it is to everyone. Right now, if you were coming into our CTI building and you needed a ramp with some store, you'd have to drive all the way around the building and then have to walk the way all the way back. You almost have to go in on each level separately. It's not what we're looking for, or what's necessary in a community. So this is the concept, it's the footprint. The gray buildings that you see are the current buildings as they sit. So the... I might...
No.
Are you okay if I did this? So back here is Soul Point Turnpike. This is at the administration building, Soul Point Center campus, CTI campus. The white E sort of shape is what we're looking to build. And that space will house not only the Alternative High School, but will house a conference center, which is sorely needed. If any of you have had the opportunity to take professional development with us, our facilities are fantastic. Our space is up. 301 is really just what we call our conference space. It's two classrooms with a wall taken out, and it really does not provide the kind of professional development environment that we need in this county. What I'd like to do at this point is to walk you through some of the renderings. We're getting very good at this. We stopped number five. All right, so as I mentioned, Soul Point Turnpike is here. This is the current entryway. This section right here is a new conference center, which is two floors. On the bottom floor will be a flexible learning lab, a community learning lab, a cafeteria. Above that will be a conference space, which will have flexible, you know, walls, large, small, whatever that was back then. This section here, this top view, will house the classrooms for the Alternative High School. And it topically lends itself to two floors in one section. And that, I can illustrate. So this is, this is the hill as we know it. This is the entryway. This is where that new road will lead up to the conference space and the shared community learning space, and then the classroom space below. Right now, we have a gym at the high school that is irregular shapes and has pillars throughout. It's really not a gym, it's just an open space. And this will provide that opportunity for students. It also, it does, before you go, before you were talking about security, I think it's also important to recognize that with the new conference center, you can go to the conference center without going through the school. Again, if you go to our current 301, you have to have someone stationed outside the door, and then even once you're in the door, you need to walk past classrooms. With the projected new conference area, you can go directly from the road to the conference area. It can be blocked off, and that's another security area. Right, so the new road will have a unified entry point for school and a separate entryway for the conference center, which does allow for us to secure the state. So we're looking to do a lot at the moment, if we can. We're looking to increase the capacity at Soul Point Center. There are certain programs that the county just doesn't offer, and in talking with the principal, she points out that there's a large need for what we call twice-exemptional students. Students who may be unnoticed in spectrum, that have human intelligence, and they don't have access to that sort of academic environment. That's an area of growth that we're looking to pursue. In addition, we have a program that suits, that's suited for the older developmentally disabled group, but we don't have a complimentary program for the younger group, so we're looking to expand in that direction as well. And we can do that by including the space at Soul Point Center, as I mentioned. We will move out some of the folks that are in there now. In terms of the 9 through 12 grouping, we are developing partnerships, more and more partnerships, very specifically with Dutchess Community College and the area colleges. We have about 50 businesses there right now that we work with in our work-based learning, and we're tapping all of those opportunities to create a true college career-ready opportunity for Dutchess County students, in fact, Dutchess County students. We want the programs to be integrated as well. So right now, we have a large number of students who come to the trades. We have a large number of students who come to, let's say, animal and plant science. What we really want is project-based learning and have those things integrated. So the welding team is working with the cause team, is working with the culinary team. There's all sorts of ways that could be done. And by creating this sort of collaborative environment and flexible space, we can do that. Where these walls will be, the space can ever flow based on the needs of the program. So it's not absolute, right? It's flexibility here, and here, and here. You may know that we have an adult learning institute, which is located right next to the heart of Poughkeepsie. What you may not know is that we offer many, many programs to those adults at our CTI facility. So we offer welding as an adult learner, taking place on the CTI campus. If we improve the CTI campus, they also benefit. So it's really about hitting the entire community of Dutchess County. This is an illustration of our, what we call 301 top screen. That's the two classrooms that are combined for our professional learning space. Below is our neighbors across the river, Ulster County. And what it might look like to have this flexible learning space, this room can be divided into quarters, can be divided into paths. I mean, certainly it accommodates what we needed to do in the same kind of square footage, much better technology as well. So again, by improving our conference area, we keep our assets at home in Dutchess County. And Sherri will join me now and talk about how we get there. Thank you. So I hope that you recognize the educational value and benefit that... Even? Yeah. The project has, it also has some really nice financial benefits to all the people in Dutchess County. Over time, it helps eliminate escalating rental costs. There are a lot of cost avoidance that I'll talk about a little bit. We get the opportunity to decrease transportation costs, and we also get the opportunity to keep our own students right here in Dutchess County. This is an example of where we can avoid some future costs. Where the Alternative High School is located was a warehouse 29 years ago. We turned it from a warehouse into a school. Anything that was part of that transition is our responsibility. So this is a roof, which is the landlord's responsibility, an air conditioner, which is Dutchess Bosis' responsibility. So those kinds of the air conditioning, the specific doors, fire alarms, all those areas are Dutchess Bosis' responsibilities. And there are also things which will cost, in the next two years, two to three years, estimate at $1.4 million, just in terms of work. That will be our responsibility to do. So I'm going to leave that up there for a second and walk you through this short sheet. It will start with me on page one, that talks about cost neutral. And we need to be honest with you, it's not cost neutral the first year. It is a figure over time, but it is a figure that will make sense over time. So if you look with me in the first column, if we were to continue to lease, assuming really minimal increases and compounding over the next 21 years, our rent would be $18 million, 18.2. The additional IT costs of having a whole other building that we need to surface and wire and maintain is $315,000. We show students between two sites. That would be $920,000 over the next 21 years. And utilities in a huge, old, poorly constructed, high-ceiling, big hall building is estimated to be almost $1.9 million over the next 21 years. So those are direct kind of costs. But there's also phenomenal cost avoidance. If we were to continue to stay where we are, just using very modest industry standards, we would be spending $21.2 million to maintain the space. We have courier costs, and couriers for us are not just mail going back and forth, we actually courage food back and forth twice a day. And we have staff that travel. You might work in the Alternative High School, but report to someone who physically has somewhere else. So there's that travel back and forth. So over 21 years, there would be $21.5 million worth of work that we could avoid. So if you go over to the next column, if the project is approved on December 11, the local share of the cost over 21 years at a maximum would be $32 million. And this would be if every district chose to borrow for 20 years at 4.5%. So we're pretty confident that that's a high number. There will be two to three years' worth of duplicate rent while we're working on the project, so we've included some of those costs in here. Utilities will be reduced, not only because it's a smaller footprint, but because a newer, well-maintained building allows for more efficiency. If you go down to the cost avoidance section, there still is some recapitalization that's what we need to happen. Almost nothing in the first five years, and then it does gradually increase. But things like courier costs, staff travel, totally disappear. So you'll see after, in the 21st year, the capital project starts to break even, if you will, and show almost a $400,000 surplus. But if you turn the page over, I think that this is where life gets really exciting. Once the components pay off whatever borrowing they need to do, we're looking at a project which could be saving $1.6 million each and every year going forward. So yes, there is some upfront cost, but once we get over that hurdle, it's really a pretty major savings for all of the residents of Dutchess County going forward. This is the time to do it. Interest rates are not at the all-time low any longer, but they're still really low in terms of history. We are very grateful, not only this board, but the other twelve boards in Dutchess County, for giving us the unanimous approval on the intermunicipal agreement. And with that, we were able to save $1.74 million in financing costs. And also, I will remind you that because of the intermunicipal agreement, you can finance it in whatever way makes sense for you as a district. What happens in Rhinebeck is not influenced by what happens in Pauling, or what happens in Red Hook, whatever. You do what makes sense for you. And most of the districts will get some state aid on the project, most, but not all. And I would be honest and say that the way it's calculated, Rhinebeck is not one of the districts that's going to benefit from the state aid on this. In full disclosure, I will tell you that. And I think this would probably be a good time to walk you through this larger sheet. Each district will pay a proportional part of the cost based on their enrollment. We've heard us talk about Awana before, and that's the figure that's used. So if you'll go with me down the column that says Rhinebeck, Rhinebeck is 2.68% of the county, and thus would be expected to contribute 2.68% of the cost. This project is estimated to be about 88% eligible. I know you've got your own projects going, so you know some things like parking lots and administrative spaces are not eligible. So the Rhinebeck component part would be $986,240. That would be, if you were, again, to do the maximum borrowing at 4.5%, would be looking at $71,795 a year. Right now, your share of just the rent, and not all of the other expenses I talked about, but just the rent, is $17,965, meaning that the net addition would be $53,830. And the last few figures are what that means to an individual homeowner in your district. Countywide, the average home is $275,000. So based on that, a homeowner in Rhinebeck with no star would see an $8 a year increase. With a basic star, they would see a $7 a year increase, and with a senior star, they would be seeing a $6 a year increase. Countywide, the average, the homeowners will notice between $6 and $14 a year change. So again, we believe it's time. We actually believe it's past time. And so that if you've been around a while, know that we proposed a major capital project about nine years ago. We were not successful, but had we been successful, we would be halfway there. So it's sort of, you know, we have to start, because we can't finish it till we start. We really think that this is time to start. We're in a position to really augment our college and career skills. You've heard us say at least 18 times, first major capital project in 50 years. And the thing that we also always, always want to make sure that is emphasized, is that we care about your students. They're our students, they're the same students. And for the most part, when people leave our district and come to Bosis, they're going to inferior facilities. We really are not at the same level as most of our districts in terms of the educational environment that we're able to provide to your students. Anticipated, I'm behind anticipated, but I anticipate a hopeful timeline for the project is December 11. A vote, that one's firm. Architectural designs to SED is September 2019, bidding the following spring, with the intention of breaking ground in 2020 and completing the project in the neighborhood of 2022. It's our target. So just kind of details, the vote is from 12 noon to 8 p.m. on December 11, Tuesday. There are 14 polling sites, one in each of the 13 districts, plus one on the Bosis site. And again, you don't have to vote where you live. This is a vote of qualified, not registered voters. So to be qualified, you need to be a U.S. citizen over the age of 18, who's lived in Dutchess County for 30 days. And you can vote wherever it's most convenient. If you live in Rhinebeck but work in Red Hook, feel free to vote in Red Hook. We really want to make it as convenient as possible. We really want as good a turnout as possible. So these are the polling locations, and yours is in the foyer, right here. And again, you have the list if you happen to be traveling somewhere and something else is easier. I guess I'll use myself. I work at Bosis. I live, I'm in the Red Oaks Mill section of Poughkeepsie. I'm technically in the Lockpinters district, but both Spackenkill and Arlington and Poughkeepsie are closer to me, so, you know, I very well might choose to vote somewhere else. That's another way to vote. And really, don't forget to vote. That's the end of our presentation, but we are here for questions. Nora and I are...
May I ask you about the assumptions that you are making for post-year '21?
Yes.
So, I mean, obviously, you know, this is a, it's an agreeable picture, and I understand, you know, why you show it this way, but in normal, you know... But in normal, you know, maintenance and aging of facilities, by the time you're at '21 years, you'd probably be looking at expenditures to maintain the facilities. It wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't be pristine the way it was the first year that you opened the facility. So are those costs built into your assumptions?
Okay. It's zero for the first five years, and then it was an escalation on the advice of our architects in terms of what we could expect.
Okay. And you wouldn't, but would you be anticipating further capital projects post, you know, essentially the payout period? I know it's a little hard.
What's happening in my mind is, for this part, I would probably say no, but I'm also thinking about the regular building condition surveys. And there would probably be two or three of them, you know, in the case of course here. So I can't say definitively no. I will say we know we have some water work that we're hoping to do before this project. So some of those kinds of things are also in work, and we need to have it in progress.
Of course. But I mean, some of what you're showing us is probably deferred maintenance. So you don't want to get into that hole again.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hi. I was working in the summer, but after we had a week's duties.
We anticipate doing the bulk of the heavy outdoor work over the summers. There will be some, maybe very careful, in terms of interfering with the students.
How will people know if they're able to vote? I mean, if you only need to have lived here for 30 days, is there a list that they have to check against, or they just show, come and show proof of residence somehow?
They actually don't even have to show proof of residence. They have to attest to the fact that they are qualified. And we will do, I have a massive database to make sure that people don't show up two or three places. But yeah, that's, that's what we need to do. And we are in the midst of kind of our public information campaign. We're really trying to get the word out. We are intentionally starting with boards of education, because people will ask you, even though it's not your project. But we want to make sure that you know as much as we can truthfully let you know, so that when people do ask you, you can either answer or put them to us or whatever. And then we are also.
The information campaign includes a spot on our website that's updated frequently, trips and presentations to libraries, to rotaries, PTAs. We'll have, we actually have one available already in our adult release to catalog that goes out to every resident. So that information's being shared among the ways.
And there's always more that can be done.
I'm a little worried about the interest rate that you're showing. I mean, you're looking at going out probably in 2020 to borrow this money. And we're seeing rates kind of starting to tick up pretty significantly. Have you done any analysis with the 5% interest rate?
I don't have them with me. Our bond council did do a range of different ones before we settled, but.
Could you send some of them out? Could you send some of them out to us so we can take a look at the deltas?
Yes.
In your schedule to do your plans and send out bids or get approval from SED, have you built in time for SED delay? Because we've lost the building season here for our project because of their delay.
Yeah. We believe so. But I know that that's a real issue. We've also, you know, SED is, they do have an expedited process, which I hope we don't have to use, but that's, that's an option. So I guess the answer is we've built in based on what their current lag time is.
It's getting better up there right now because there are fewer projects out there. So there was a, we went out with the rush of them, and at the same time as many other school districts. And there's not a lot of, you know, of current votes on out there like there was a year and a half ago. So it should be, it should be a little bit calmer to get through, you know, in the coming year. It's just that there were so many projects up there at one time. I forgot the number. I mean, it was astronomical, the number of projects that were up there versus what it is right now. It's a lot less than what it was.
Could you refresh what the Awana percentage is and also the percentage on the 2017, '18 tax levy? What that means?
That's kind of a, that's where we get to the percentage of where it's going to be dollars to your, to your residents.
But percentage against what our tax levy was for '17, '18?
And the Awana is a resident-weighted average daily attendance. And it's close to enrollment, but high school, for example, is weighted a little bit near the minimum entry, so it's not exactly enrollment.
Thank you.
And that's an SED number, by the way.
And then they apply our combined wealth ratio. Zero. So it's zero. Even though there's a percentage up there, they're zero.
More comment than a question. I appreciate you coming out tonight and giving us a lot of detail. If I'm a Rhinebeck resident or a Pauling resident or a Lockpeters resident or whatever, and I don't know through some other means that this is happening, I'm probably not going to be trolling your website looking for that information, because I don't even know it's happening. So I would encourage you, and I'm sure you probably already planned for this, but I would encourage you to make sure there's a much broader county outreach, so at least people know there's a vote. And to the extent that you can give them detail, that they know that. They can always then go to your website and look for more detail. But I, you know, I, I think I can say that from the last time through, which was unsuccessful, my, my perception is that there was not that broad outreach to the Dutchess County community. And I think this, this proposition is going to be successful. People have to know about it, have to be able to easily learn about it and make the case to them and definitely go, yes. If they don't know about it, or it's fuzzy, the details are fuzzy to them, they may actually come out and vote no, because they feel like you're not even forthcoming to them. I'm not saying, suggesting that you are. So take that back.
I think that's one of the big things we learned from the first round.
Yeah.
That's right. Yes.
Okay. Great.
And I'm quite serious in terms of the suggestions. Yeah. Suggestions, ideas.
Well, we made, when we did our, our capital vote, in the run-up to the vote, we made real guests of ourselves with the community. We made sure everybody had at least heard from some, somebody once. And we had a pretty good turnout, I think, in off-season.
How did you do that? I mean, like going to.
We helped a ton of public sessions, and we publicized them through a lot of different, you know, local groups. We got a, you know, for, for a capital project, we got a fair amount of interest from the community. You know, people came to sessions.
It wasn't our budget.
Contacted the district office and asked questions and, you know.
We sent a mail to every postal customer in this district. I know doing that to the entire county of Dutchess is going to be a considerable expense. But, and if everybody gets something in their mailbox, and they don't have any excuse to say, I didn't know this was happening, and this is what it was about. I think if you, if you try to cut corners on that kind of broad outreach, my concern is that the response will not be as positive as it would otherwise.
And people don't like to feel as though they're shut out either.
Yeah. Right.
Part of that newsletter also included an FAQ. So we sat around a table, and we thought about all of the negative commentary that people might have and have an answer for those questions. You know, obviously putting the appropriate, you know, context and spin on it. But it's important, I think, because people will have questions, and they may not necessarily know who to call. And, you know, looking on a website doesn't necessarily give them the information they're looking for. So if you can throw the information at them, I think it's.
So you distributed that at your public meetings?
No, that was part of the newsletter that we, that we nailed. And we also put a more extensive FAQ on our website.
Yeah. We do have a long web site, but I think that you're right. You have to be there first.
And the fire has doubled, and it has an FAQ and a bulletin.
I'd encourage you to use the component school district's communication channels too, so we can share with our families and our communities, you know, through our regular channels, that there's a vote going on and where, direct them for more information.
We'd love to.
Yeah, we can do that.
You know, that's how much you're able and willing to do, but we will, we will officially ask you.
And local libraries also, I think you mentioned the library sessions, their communication channels as well. And I know from working in local libraries, a lot of times you can use radio communications, promo, you know, they, yeah, PSA is, I don't know if that's something we have to make sure it's on the list.
Is anybody making a push towards our legislators to be able to put this capital project under the tax cap as opposed to, right now, it's currently outside of it? So when you see this, I was going to say $50,000. That's a part of the tax cap, where if it was our own project, it would, because our voters approved of it, those monies are already set aside, and they don't have to be voted on again. But in BOSI's case, even if they are successful, it does, this money does not go under the tax cap, and it is, so it gets counted towards it. So it's a major factor. I know they've been trying to put legislation through over the years up there, and it always gets defeated for whatever reason. It doesn't make sense.
It's been approved by both houses the last, the last year of the governor's term. So their, their effort is still there. It's obviously, it's a big deal, not just for Dutchess County.
Yeah, it's the whole state. The whole state.
It's one of those things that, for most of us, doesn't make a lot of sense. Because as you mentioned, your own things are outside.
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't make sense where, when we put our capital project through, our voter said yes. I don't have to worry about that was additional cost, because the voters approved of it already. But even though this one would be voter-approved, it's, it's not, it's not sheltered from the cap. So let's hope, we got still some years to hopefully get that changed.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's an ongoing, we're.
No, yeah, it's not just us. It's the entire state that runs into this issue.
Anything else for us? No? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It was very informative presentation.
Now we have the opportunity for our principal reports, Brad.
Jennifer, what would you like to say?
Not as excited now.
Well, good evening, everyone. So a few things happening at Chancellor this year. We welcomed 397 students to Chancellor K25. I wanted to mention our K2 and K35 open house was over the last two weeks. So we wanted to thank Laura and I for attending, being part of the universe. It's amazing where we fit in those first 30 minutes. So we get a lot of information out of families. It was very, it was just very successful. Two things I wanted to mention. One, this year, if you didn't know, we did invite third, fourth, fifth grade students to join their parents to open house, hoping that they could kind of increase the need for those in their own education. And it was by far the best attended to be by open house we've ever had. K2 is very well-attended, K5, and so is a few families of, or they show up in the second, third, that kind of thing. This was a packed group, standing room only, kind of a big success too. A little noisy in the hallway over the summer weekend, dressed up like that next year, but it was just a great first-year effort. It was also an opportunity for me, for the first time since we won the $25,000 Project Fit grant, to thank the community, really in person, for all the work that they did. Because we certainly, well, it's just, I mean, you had it on your own tab, so I got an opportunity to thank everyone. So that was something we could celebrate. On that note, I wanted to let you know that a project, a part of a project fit update for you. Kevin Jornell and Dave Juddin were trained today as far as, we have two years of in-service, so this was the first year. Unfortunately, the rain caused it to be inside, so a lot of the stuff that they were working on had to do with the materials that were also included in the project over and above the, the equipment that was installed outside. So they, they got to work at 20, 30, 40 students throughout the day to work on a lot of the activities that were curricular. A big part of that grant over and above that, so it was installed outside. Because of the rain, we will have an opportunity to have someone, to have another trainer that's in New Jersey that in the next month or so will come and join us and work with us on the outside equipment. So one thing I wanted to mention also, we saved the date. I'll be sending something out very soon. On October 17th is when we'll be doing our ribbon cutting for the, the Project Fit playground that was installed. We're ready to roll. We're hoping to have, we'll have every student, every staff outside. We inviting the Chamber of Commerce, Rotary Club, a lot of the other local businesses that help us out, some of the radio stations, and that's what we're going to obviously introduce. Shoprite and Dan on hand to, to celebrate with us. So keep an eye out for that. We'll be giving things to Joe for the Twitter feed and putting things out as well as. I wanted to mention also, another new thing this year. We began our new math program, Big Ideas Math, which feeds directly to the middle school as well. They use that program. It really rose to the top as far as all the programs we looked at over the last year and a half with our math, math task force. And the good thing is, we started the year in the ground running. On October 1st, next Monday, we'll have our afternoon training. The first will probably be a handful of trains, but that'll be a lot of the kind of digital rabbit hole that's, that needs just a little help navigating through. So we get training on that. I also wanted to mention, as per their summer curriculum work, Specialist Team introduced their superhero unit last week. And this is really the third year. They spent a lot of time over the summer as a team, coming, coming up with a really good character-ed program of these superheroes, and they, they launched it, and they had their caves and everything. It was a great launch. So they'll be doing that over the next several weeks. Also wanted to mention, every year, we do Pin Wheels for Peace. This year, the weather and Mrs. Johnson kept sick at the same time, so we actually postponed it from Friday to this Monday yesterday. For the third year in a row, we're doing it, it was Mrs. Johnson joining the team. And for the third year in a row, we actually did a pledge together outside and planted our pin wheels. And I spent some time speaking to the students K5 about the idea that planting that pin wheel is really a symbolic commitment to your community and that kind of thing. So it was just one of the best ones yet. It'll get better every year. We even left them out in the rain, and they, they lasted.
They saw them.
Yeah. Oh, all right. You were over there today. A couple of fell down, but mostly we stayed. The ground was wet, so it was actually easy to plant yesterday. Wanted to mention for our second year, we happen to be offering an interactive, dual-long professional development opportunity offered by the Anderson Center. Last year, we invited teachers from grades three, four, and five, a lot of teams as well, ICT teams. This year, I wanted to thank Emily Davis and our specialist director, who spent some time really securing funds for that last year, which is such a success. We want to continue it this year for K2, K22. So our CTT teams across kindergarten, first, and second grade will be working along with a couple of other general classroom teachers. And primarily, they work on classroom management. And the way they do it is, instead of it just being a one-shot, they'll be coming in sometime this week, I believe Thursday. And what they do is that Anderson will send representatives, they'll go in and observe classrooms for 45 minutes to an hour. Then they do a two-hour training based on those observations, you know. And then there's about a month or two in between where they have an opportunity to apply the items from that training. And then they come back and do another observation about a month later. So it really is kind of an ongoing thing. And it really was so successful last year. Like I said, we invited kindergarten through second-grade teachers this year. And if it's a success, Emily and I are already talking about the possibility of maybe including specialist teachers. So I'm following, it was important. So to be forward to that. I also wanted to mention, don't quote you, but I think it was about two years ago or so, maybe a little bit less, where the Thompson Trust Center approached us as a district, wanting to have a. to have a partnership with us as far as granting opportunities for families in need. So I wanted to really public the thing, her own firm locks, she really spent the last year working with Thompson Trust, is putting together a fund, I believe about $30,000 that allows her to stay in, and it's district-wide, it's not just Chancellor, she just has a senior person that's running it, but she spent a lot of time putting it together, and I definitely wanted to commend her. And the great thing about it is that money stays there and is used, it's a very quick turnaround. We're more of like a middleman as far as finding a need, let's say a social worker reaches out to one of us, or I'm having a conversation, I was just having a conversation with Stephanie Cady actually about rental equipment, instruments for families, and we're already in talks with Thompson to possibly organize paying for yearly rentals for families who need it. But there's a lot of other things, things like connectivity, even rent. So it's a really wonderful thing that allows us to turn it around pretty quick with Thompson Trust and the drivers sort of helping us once again, helping just more families in this community. So I did want to thank her. We've already utilized it, this is, you know, started at the end of this year, we're already utilizing it, end of last year, we're already utilizing it for five or six families, which is great. Also wanted to let you know on that same note, first distribution of our backpack program for the third year in our way, Chancellor, something I'm very proud of, will begin on October 18th and continue through the entire year. We're about, we're able to fund about 15 families right now, so. Ryan S. and one of our P E teachers who had left, he kind of ran a couple of years ago, so I'm taking it over, and we have retirees like Liz Erwin and people who actually don't work in our building anymore, helping taking that app and packing bags and all those things. We're getting that ready. I also wanted to mention that I was lucky enough to finally, the Dutchess BOSI's, had put together a network for elementary school principals, so I was able to attend the first meeting on Friday morning, this past Friday. Us and Spacky Kill were the only people that were there to go, but we're hoping to build capacity, it's something I've always wanted to be able to do over time, and BOSI's really hadn't been able to utilize a network, put it in place, so this year, they're doing a meeting about five or six times. What we're focusing on, based on surveys over the summer and over the last couple of months that they've gathered, we're focusing on RTI response intervention, child study teachers data integration, kind of where, how you pool data together. I was actually able to share our child study team referral form with the group and let them know how we collect that and how that has kind of changed over time. So it was a great opportunity for myself, you know, with BOSI's. Some upcoming events, we have the Title I AIS Open House on Wednesday, October 24th. And I also wanted to take a moment, I have a rare opportunity to welcome a new staff member on the evening he's being approved by all of you, so Eric, welcome sir, Mr. Thomas, who'll be joining our staff, I believe a week from yesterday. So we're looking forward to it, and he will be the beneficiary of that extra level of training as well, so he'll be in place when the trainer comes to the project.
Any questions? Diane?
I do, I have two questions. With the backpack program, you said you could fund 15 families, are there more that would use it if you had more funds, or is that?
Absolutely, yeah. There's about 60 families. Funding certainly one of them also space, very often when you, because we actually had someone from the community last year that was able to donate, and he really actually donated for every family. Unfortunately, the capacity of holding on to the food is storing, which actually isn't deeply thing, you pick it up and then it usually, it usually runs for about three weeks, so there's a lot of storage there, and then staffing and logistics of the backpacks and things like that has got to us. We were able to invite 30 families last year, and we ended up with about 19 altogether, which is starting a little bit extra this year, and then we're, I've actually talked to Tom over, about last year, about the possibility of staff, like donating $5 to paycheck and things like that, if we wanted to go that route. Right now, we've been able to fund through a lot of other ways. But yeah, it's definitely a bigger need. This year, we'll start with 15.
It's a great project. My other question, we were over at your building today, and we're looking at the new fitness equipment, and I'm wondering, is that going to solely be used in PE class, or is that going to be like open at recess and?
It'll be, it'll be open at recess during intramurals, which is what the E team is outside working with the staff, with the students. And primarily for a couple of reasons. Right now, we don't have the staffing to really supervise that space, coordinate deployment. Also, there is a lot of, you know, it really is physical fitness type thing, so it's kind of a different type of exercising during recess. So you really do need much more supervision than you would normally. So for now, it's going to be open to intramurals during PE, and then also, there's a lot of activities that the PE team at Chancellor will be utilizing as far as units are concerned and things like that. And then certainly open to the community for after school on weekends and things like that. We already have a lot of people using, which is great.
That's it, thanks.
I would ask, Jacqueline was mentioning other fitness areas that she's seen has signage, particularly for community members, about how to use the equipment, what it's for, is that kind of signage going to happen, or is it more not?
There is actually, it's kind of small, but when you first kind of go into the front, there's a, there's a metal sign that describes.
That's just like safety information on how to use.
I asked Kevin before the meeting started, he wasn't sure either, but he was going to look into it.
Yeah, because I know that sign specifically says, this fitness equipment is kind of like playground.
It's not like, this is what this piece of equipment's for, use it for, this kind of exercise or that kind of.
Yeah, it's nothing like each station.
Yeah, right.
By the way, one thing that's really great about it, I actually want to commend Sheldon as well, is a little bit bigger than the plans, which is great because really, if you look, there's eight stations. I know Kevin and I, recently when we were talking about this, envisioned 10 stations, so there is actually space for them to create, like, for example, this program came with media loops that they were, you know, turning on today and things like that, so there's actually space, unlike a lot of other schools, where they can set up two more free floating stations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, welcome back. I always like to take the opportunity first at this, at this first meeting, principals report, to thank Sheldon Teeter and his group, operations and maintenance, for the wonderful work that they did this, this summer. Certainly, the capital project, not as much took place as was expected, but what didn't take place on this campus really did disrupt things at times, and they did a fantastic job of working around the running of wires for the new phone system, new access, that sort of thing. So just commendation to Sheldon and his group. BMS opened its doors to 258 students this fall, that's up 10 from September of 2017, and in just a quirky coincidence, we opened with exactly 86 students at each grade level. We've since lost one, so we're down, but I thought that was unusual. We completed all of our typical beginning of the school year transitional activities, sixth grade walk your schedule night, open house, sixth grade walk your schedule night attendance this year was outstanding in both events. I think 69 out of 86 students and families attended the walk your schedule night, and thanks to Virginia Mesa, who did some quick math for me, nearly 76% of all parents from BMS students were in attendance at open house. So we were really pleased at our attendance this year. That's certainly up from years past, I think last year was the first year that we actually kept those numbers, and we were at 66. I want to thank Jacqueline for, for attending and speaking on behalf of the board as well. Brett has 30 minutes, we crammed a lot of information and a lot of speaking into 15 so we can maximize parents' time with their child's teachers. As we begin the school year, we have many teachers that are very excited to put, to implement the products of their summer curriculum work. Our BMS science teachers did Yeung's work this past summer, rewriting the entire 6-8 science curriculum so that it aligns with the newer state science learning standards that were adopted in 2016. State put out a pretty aggressive implementation schedule, which I believe ended with revamped assessments in 2021. This is the first of two years that is called the, last year was the awareness phase, and this is the implementation phase. They did so much work this summer that they're going to have a working document to be able to, to use over the course of the next two years, so they're well ahead of the game. This new curriculum places an increased emphasis on modeling, engineering, investigation as students apply rather than gather information, so we're excited about that. Our ELA teachers worked in conjunction with their grade level special education teacher to completely rewrite and align with the Common Core learning standards, the first module. They did this at the request and with a lot of input from Emily Davidson, the Director of Special Ed, in terms of just looking at our change in population and being able to better meet their needs. The focus, they revamped all of the performance tasks, they included new resources and novels, they revamped all of the assessments and really focuses on differentiated instruction and meeting each child where they're at. Our middle and high school Spanish teachers worked this summer to redesign assessments in the Spanish one curriculum. This is something that they're going to continue to work up through the levels by creating integrated proficiency assessments, which are performance-based and focused on interpretational, interpersonal, presentational communication in target language. It really reflects the immersion philosophy that our foreign language program has. And finally, many of our teachers were engaged in a number of technology integration projects this past summer. Our seventh grade math teacher continues to flip her classroom. Last summer, she completed the first and second units in her curriculum. This year, she completed units three and four. We had several teachers that converted as we, as we moved away from smart, smart notebook and smart software, converting their smart lessons to Google Docs and Google Slides for better use with Canvas. And as you are all aware, many of the teachers now at the middle school level use Canvas. We had a number of teachers, in fact, four more, social study six, ELA six, sciencing, math seven, and computer science one and two, that continued their conversion to the Canvas learning engine system this past summer. So we're excited about that. It's really been a useful and valuable tool. It does carry with it some, some concerns, and as Brett mentioned, the Thompson Trust, one of those concerns that we've talked about at the building level, and we've talked about at the district level, is internet availability at home, availability of a computer and, you know, other, other devices. So we are talking with Steve Jensen, we're talking, continuing to talk about some sort of computer home program. We've actually, with the, the help of the former High School Technology Club, we were able to put refurbished computers in the hands of many of our students over the course of the last two years. We are continuing to look for ways to, you know, to increase that availability, and as Brett mentioned, the Thompson Trust. I do believe that we have some connectivity opportunities and possibilities in terms of providing internet for students at home and being able to use those funds to do that. Sixth grade level, we, we always focus every year on the transition from the elementary school to the middle school. This year was no different. As we've done for the last couple of years, all of our sixth grade students remained in their sixth grade home base classes for the majority of the day. But in addition to that, and they do a lot of activities to get activated to middle school philosophy, get activated to rules and procedures, to take a tour of the building, to learn how to use a lock, all sorts of, all sorts of things. But in addition to that, we have done over the course of the last several weeks, a number of pro-social skills lessons. This is something that we've done for, for many years, but this year, we've included several others, or brought back from, from many years back, a couple. And they include, they include presentations centered around community building, establishment of common practice, common expectations, empowerment of students, fostering empathy, and inclusion for all students. Social emotional learning is going to be a focus for us over the course of the school year, through continued professional development that we're going to take part in later this fall. We're going to look to integrate more of the social emotional learning into our curriculum as well as some standing room lessons that we're going to do at all three, three grade levels. In addition, the middle school is investigating the possibility of bringing Phoenix Kawamoto back. You'll recall, she worked with our seventh grade students last year, doing a series of presentations called Cultivating Compassion. That was sponsored for us, and we were able to provide that through a brand, through Culture Connect. They generously reached out and asked us if we'd like to partner in that endeavor again this year, so we're excited about that possibility. In addition, we're investigating the possibility of partnering with Alice Holm. She's a parent of the district and who's also a fearless living coach, and she's going to look to do some work with our students around the topic of overcoming fear and anxiety. So again, we're very excited for that possibility as well. As we begin the new school year, our extracurricular clubs are up and running. Meetings began last week, I think all the two of our clubs have, have met at this point. In addition to that, we are identifying students, again, it's very early on in the school year, but the earlier we intervene, the better. We are identifying students that we think may be at risk to, to struggle with learning, and we're going to get our after-school of extra help programs up and running somewhere right around the five. Couple of upcoming events, on October 18th, our sixth grade students will travel to the Bronx Zoo. The sixth grade team has created a number of lessons for the day focusing on tying curriculum together in the classroom, as well as tying their learning to Madagascar Day, which will be placed that following week. On October 19th, Superintendent's Conference Day, all staff and faculty in the district will be, with the HDP activities focused on social emotional learning, culturally responsive instruction, and distress model, crisis, and de-escalation. On October 26th, as I said, we'll help Madagascar Day, once again, through coordination of a number of different organizations, and thanks, very large thanks, to the financial support of the Rindberg Science Foundation. Unfortunately, about a week before the school year started, and as we had done much work over the summer, in planning for this day, we found out that one of our funding sources has run out. And again, thanks to the Rindberg Science Foundation, who in a very short cycle was able to evaluate our grant proposal, and they'll offer to, to pick up that funding. And finally, on October 30th, the service is back in town, the sixth grade service for, for another year, thanks to the PT SO. Our students will be working with performance and intentional students project.
Any questions?
I have, I think, two. Did you say every teacher at BMS is now converted to Canvas?
No. No, I shouldn't say that. Well, I, I did say that. You know, just as, as I was, as I was sitting here and anticipated that question, I did a quick rough sketch, and I think we've got four, four to six at each grade level at this point that are using it in some, somewhere. Again, there's a very heavy lift in beginning to use in Canvas, and it's really a multi-year process, and that continues to be a, just kind of reworking and re-tweaking as teachers work for it, but we've got quite a few at each grade level using it.
Sorry, my other question, how many clubs is BMS running this year?
I believe eight.
I don't know. Can't tell you, not off the top of my head.
What's an answer? On the flipped classroom paradigm, is there more than one teacher looking to expand that, or is it just the one seventh grade math that's looking to do that?
Seventh grade math is, is the first teacher in our building that's done that. Canvas does do some of that, so there are teachers that are, that are using aspects of the flipped classrooms in a number of other subjects, but she really is the first teacher who is doing, you know, entirety of it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm happy to report a little bit about the high school. Similar to my colleagues, I'll begin with some facts and figures. We welcomed 343 students back to the high school this year, 72 in the ninth grade, 89 in the 10th grade, 82.
in the 10th grade, and 82 in the 11th grade, 100 in the senior class. We had six new registrants, thanks again to the work of our custodians, our kitchen summer staff, our counseling staff, the opening of school again was very smooth this year. Once again, Mr. Berg organized a new student walk through night for ninth grade students. And although we had the smallest, in my recollection, the smallest ninth grade class entering Rhinebeck High School, the largest proportion, almost three quarters of the 72 paying for walk-through schedule and wanting to locate their locker and test their combination and see their friends. This is the seventh year of our peer mentoring club, which is advised by our school social worker, Matt Groulier, as we have done in the past. Our peer mentors spent part of the day with our new entrants, our six new entrants to the school district, these team-building activities and other orientation activities so they can start their careers at Rhinebeck High School on a very positive note. I'd like as well to update you on some work from the building level planning team. You may remember, maybe not, that last year I mysteriously referenced a project that the BLPT was undertaking, and I would have more information in the future. So more information will be shared with you right now, and it's the following. Last year, the team proposed welcoming students back to school with a personalized message written by or selected by their teachers. So we spent the year sorting out planning this activity, and with the help of BMS eighth grade teachers, we created a Google Doc. I use the word me very generously because I didn't create that Google Doc, but somebody else themed it. We created a Google Doc, every student's name is listed, all of our faculty in high school, along with eight grade teachers, selected eight or 10 students who they knew, and for each place those students needed to select a quotation that was, in their view, very meaningful for that student based on their career, or they wrote something individualized for each student. With the help of our clerical support staff, we fabricated, again, I'm using that paradigm very generously, we fabricated bookmarks, which this thing is printed. Those bookmarks were then inserted into an agenda book, which will be handed to each of students in our walk-in back-to-school class meetings. So with all of that work, I had the privilege of distributing those agenda books to the students, and watching them as they took off bookmarks and random messages. And the input, highly of feedback I received from students was that they thought it was a very nice gesture, very meaningful, nice way to start the school year. You know, their body language too indicated that the vast majority of them valued that experience and the value to starting the year on a positive note. So I want to recognize the work of our faculty and our Mr. Chemist's faculty in creating those messages for our students. The BLPT conducted its first meeting last week. We've got some initial projects this year. Again, we're going to host a day of service in the coming weeks, coordinating hopefully with the village tree planting that I believe takes place on the 3rd. One of our members suggested a community read that we're going to look at as well in terms of proposing for our school community. As long as I'm sharing, BLPT news, one item on the agenda involved our commencement date for Rhinebeck High School, which has not been established yet, so I solicited some input from the building level planning team. And the building level planning team, in terms of their input, was very strongly in favor of conducting our commencement after exams have been completed on June 29th. I have polled my colleagues in the county by email in terms of when they select their commencement dates, I've heard from many of them, but not all. Our near neighbors are also conducting their commencement exercises on June 29th. Some schools, June 22nd, one or two, I think in the South County, between the 22nd and 29th sometime in that week. So no final decision has been made at this point. If, as the elected representatives of our community, you have any thoughts on this matter, I'd be most interested in sharing them. A decision has been made yet, as I've said, but a decision will need to be made soon. So that's BLPT. In terms of guidance update, as of today, we've had admissions reps from 20 colleges visiting our students in intelligent careers too, which has been heard throughout the remainder of the school year. In academic updates, one of our students is a National Merit Scholarship finalist, and we have four commended students in this year's National Merit Competition, which is, for a school of our size, is a high number of students recognized. And some of our departments, students in our Duchess Community College English classes, which as you all were offering for the first time this year, will be traveling to DCC on Friday for an orientation to the school and an orientation to its library and its research facilities. My understanding is that students who are in a dual crack course at Rhinebeck, they are accorded all of the privileges of the DCC student. So they'll be oriented in terms of what's available to them. Further English department news, once again, for I think the fourth year, our ninth grade English class will be partnered with the Bard Institute for Writing and Thinking. We'll be visiting Bard on Friday, November 2nd to work on shared texts and on creating literary expositions as well as other interpretations with Bard students and professors. A lot's going on on November 2nd. Kitchen Journal Editor John Penny will speak with our journalism class. In partnership with the Rhinebeck Science Foundation, the English department is going to offer seniors in English classes at Rhinebeck High School an opportunity to practice networking skills with local professionals and practitioners in something that's being termed Info Chat. This is a two-hour physical field trip, students who develop questions for professionals who practice in careers they're interested in. In addition to the additional interviews, we'll research those careers and we'll create an exposition based on what they've learned. This is going to be very helpful as well as our students conclude their career plans. The judge student is required to complete their high school careers. We're looking at ways with the English department to share this writing with our larger community as well as with the people who are volunteering their time to come and speak with our seniors. In the science department, as you recall, our science department participated in the school lab initiative sponsored by someone in Cahill's office, where there were monies available granted to our school to purchase science equipment. The science equipment has, I'm very happy to report, has begun to come in, and it's being delivered to us. Actually, Mr. Decker is taking it up on pallets. So I don't read everything we've seen so far, mostly because I don't know what some of these things are, but we have a volcano model, projectile launchers, dynamics card and tracking system, centrifugal force apparatus, motoring motion sensors, optics, expansion kits, temperature probes, magnetic field sensors, and other scientific devices. So our science department is very pleased, excited about employing these devices in their hands-on labs, and there's more comments, I understand. Some guidance news, the guidance counselors and I have established our scheduling timeline, master schedule writing timeline for this year, and our target date for a master schedule to be finished, and both of these students' requests is May 3rd. And I'm assuming, please correct me if I'm wrong, that that will be in time to request of the board permission to run any courses, should they exist, and enroll fewer than 12. In addition, the guidance department and I are investigating the Bard Early College Opportunities. There's a program that's sponsored to request our BOSEs in which students can spend half a day at Rhinebeck and can spend half a day at the Bard Early College Program in Hudson, earning Bard credits as well as Rhinebeck credits. The cost, last time I'm correct, if I'm wrong, approximately, I think, $29,000 per student. And we've got to look at, the unknown is the cost for transportation. Once we have a firm idea of what those costs are, I'll be reporting more detail to the board so you can decide whether this is something that you want to pursue among our students to participate in. In extracurricular news, this may be, well, this may be more meaningful to people who are more familiar with the high school cafeteria, but I'm very happy to report the replacement cafeteria year old is almost completed. It's currently in Mr. Giles' art room. The canvas has to be mounted and stretched, and then it will take its place in our cafeteria, and the current view of the cafeteria will be conserved and retired. The drama club this year, again, is going to sponsor a talent show, and will be presenting a non-musical drama in November. So we're looking forward to that performance. The first issue of Rhinebeck Reality, our school newspaper, has been published. I know with you that it was published on September 24th.
That's impressive.
I've sent it to parents, it'll be posted on our website, my secretary's back on duty. And our journalism class and our student reporters will be traveling to Columbia for a workshop on student journalism on November 5th, and their participation in that conference is due to the Rhinebeck Science Foundation's support. If it stops raining, this is your book news, tomorrow, we'll have our annual photo on the hill with our senior class. It's already been posted once, hopefully it'll be fair weather tomorrow. Looking ahead, our open house is on Thursday, and Trustee Jenkins will be speaking with our parents. We'll have a senior parent meeting on 6:30 October 4th. Starts a little earlier because we have a guest speaker from DCC who talks about our seniors and our senior parents about financial aid and the rehabilitation process. The end of the tournament, of course, is October 6th, PSAT on October 13th, and our ninth and 10th grade parent meeting will take place 7 o'clock on October 16th. We'll send reminders about the ninth and 10th grade parent. There's very good about giving me that letter and not letting me forget to send that. So that's the, this one.
Any other questions?
Andy Bennett Tournament on the 5th and the 6th?
Thank you, yeah. JV games begin on the 5th, varsity games are on the 6th. Stay tuned, please, because a number of our student athletes have signed up to take an SAT on the 6th, so some of the contests, we're working with our schools or competing with, some of the contests have been moved later, hopefully will be moved later in the day so that students can do both and take the SATs if they sign up with them and they can also participate in a lot of contests.
I have several things. So the bookmarks, they were a great project this year, and it's, you know, something that we can do here because our staff knows our students, it's not something you can do everywhere, so that really was a great program. Graduation, I would say make your decision soon, parents are anxiously waiting for that date. I know it's been talked about before here, about maybe moving it to Friday instead of Saturday, so that's all my input I'll give you on graduation. And I'm just wondering, for the guidance moving up the schedules, how that worked now that it's all said and done in the summer? Were there more changes than usual because they planned their schedule earlier? What can you tell us about that process?
In my experience in the process, I think it was successful, and it was, I think, beneficial for my angle and yours to have those relatively hard numbers earlier in the process before the course waivers are requested. There was, as you well know, there was a late-breaking change in the summer in which we had to, and it was just going to be the back end, a pretty significant change to our master schedule late, and that caused some difficulties towards the end of the summer in signing class students into this required classes. So absent that sort of change next year, I would expect an even smoother scheduling process.
And my question is about the lab equipment that's coming in. Will it be used this year or is it being held on to?
It'll be used this year, absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Oh, Jenkins, just let you know, I will be meeting with the Rhinebeck High School students on Friday.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. It's always a great year, all the good stuff. Thank you.
Mr. King, would you mind staying for a couple minutes?
Sure.
If my colleagues will indulge us, I would like to move item 6.1 ahead of the consent agenda.
6.1 is the consent.
It should probably be 6.2.
Should be two.
Up ahead of the consent agenda, if that's okay? All right.
Oh, is it? Or just, and nod, everybody okay with that?
You sat here for an hour and a half already, what's another half hour?
May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Eric Thomas to the part-time .60 FTE position of physical education teacher assigned to the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School effective on or around October 1st, 2018, in the tenure area of physical education at a salary of Step 1 N.A. $60,225 times .60 prorated from the effective start date in accordance with the RTA salary scheduled for 2018-19.
So moved to 2nd?
All in the paper. Welcome to town. Originally scheduled agenda. Have a good night, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Is there anybody who would like to?
You gotta go all the way back.
We could not.
Let's skip to the end. Ready to adjourn?
We can summarize instead of read, that would do things along.
Pretend you're me.
I can?
If asked nicely, yes.
All right. So, Board Committee reports. First one is long-range planning, that one's mine. We did a little brainstorming back on the 12th for our upcoming meeting at Halden, which happened this afternoon. We sort of came up with a number of questions, all of which are listed here, and I'm not going to run through them all. I will tell you that our meeting at Halden was really very brutal. We sat for about two hours with the principal of the high school at Halden, who had been an integral part of developing their strategic plan. And she talked to us for a long time about how that process worked, what changes they were committed to making, how they worked as a community, as a school, parents and teachers and students who are empowered in that building to have a voice, and really realigning the things they taught and how they taught them. There's a lot of project-based learning in all classrooms, interdisciplinary, K-12. So it was really interesting, we've got a lot of information to sort of sift through, I think, and make more formula for that, but it was great, great game. So I think they're going to be a great resource for us moving forward. Next, we have a person.
Those are mine. We'll, an executive session, have an update on our administrative upcoming negotiations. And then we just talked a little bit about some information that come up at Citizens' Advisory Committee, some ideas that were brought up there about school structures, and we just talked a little bit about that in our meeting, and how possibly the Personnel Committee could investigate those or what steps to look into those.
And facilities. That's me. So we talked about mold, other schools have it, we don't. And I think we were all encouraged to hear that Sheldon has gone through training, mold remediation training, and we're active in prevention efforts, so. And, oh, and Mark brought up a really interesting idea about exploring the possibility of BOSEs, for BOSEs to establish a COSER Cooperative Services Arrangement with a mold remediation company so that future issues for the district could at least be able, and Tom is going to investigate that. We talked about summer work that happened, and we saw that tonight, so if there's really anything to add here. The upcoming capital project news, I believe there was supposed to be a pre-week meeting, yes?
Yeah.
And so we should... And so we should start having a sense in about two months to compare against what was budgeted for each item. We should have bids to look at. A tree fell on Knollwood and knocked out power partially in both buildings. The tree was not on the school property and we learned about how the school works, schools work with partial power and how they're able to really make up for what's out. And then a parent had asked me about whether we use Roundup and we don't. And that's it.
All right. Any questions for facilities? Okay. So we move on to the 2018 municipal proposed bylaw amendment. Has anybody had a chance to look at those? Do we want to put it off?
Just put it off.
All right. You got it. Good. I brought them back.
Yeah, I brought them too. That's as far as I got.
All right. Then, good news. Anybody have any extra?
That's pretty high standard.
It's a pretty great, it's a pretty great start.
That school's doing a good job of that.
Always feel good moments when they're here.
Old business. We had an opportunity to public comment. Would our public like to speak? Actually, I just, I thought that's not what I wanted to hear. I wanted to come and say something.
So Susan St. Clair, our T president, I did just want to thank the board and also our administration, Mr. Fallon, you know, in particular also the Communication Committee. We met with you, Victor and I, met with you about a month or so before school was out, I think it was. And very much appreciated open house, the comments that you made. I think the message was well delivered and positive. And, you know, Mr. Fallon, the memo that you were putting out there, I think was also done in conjunction with the Board of Education. I think also, I think just really kind of drove home what we talked about when we had the discussion. So I do appreciate it and I will tell you that I know that, you know, many teachers did. I know my principal, you know, John Kemble, so when we had our big meeting and he, you know, was just talking to team leaders and he specifically mentioned, we start that open house debriefing. And, you know, he mentioned about, I don't know how many of you had a chance to be down there because a lot of times we're in our rooms and, you know, just talked about, you know, comments that you've made and, you know, any of us that had been there. And I, I did go down to see the beginning part and so I got a chance to see PTSO and everybody. And people were really impressed and very pleased. So I just want to say thanks and have a good night. Thank you very much.
About any time. Always welcome in the audience. Any other?
I have a couple. First of all, just confirmation that Friday, October 5th is our Breakfast with the Board program. Most of you can make it. Some of you are unable to. And, you know, where I think we start about seven, about 7:10 over here, the middle school cafeteria, then we go over to Chancellor a little bit after eight through their, their time to be with their kids. So that's, that's cast in stone now. On the same busy weekend, the PTSO has announced that they're having their back-to-school picnic that afternoon, so that's Friday, 5th. While the Andy Bennett Tournament is in full swing up here on our campus, but we've, we've had those two activities coincide in past years. We used to have the Andy Bennett Tournament the first weekend of school and PTSO used to have their picnic the first weekend of school. So it's, it's evidently doable. So that's what I have been asked as we have the last several years, it'll be down the lines of any part, I've been asked if the board wants a table. We have the last several years when it's been down there, had a table set up, a board member or two or three would need to be there kind of manning the table, you know, have extra copies of the calendar or whatever there. It's more presence, I think, than anything else. But if you, if some members of the board can be there that afternoon from roughly 2:30 ish to around 5:00, I think, at the latest, I'd appreciate knowing. And if so, I'll ask the PTSO to make sure that they have a table set up for us there. Is it your inclination that some of you will be able to be there? Son?
I don't know my schedule. Depending on any athletic commitment, I would be happy to do that. I can be there as well. All right.
Okay. So I'll ask for tables. No others?
Maybe before that day, we can figure out what we want to give out or if we want, you know, to have anything at the table.
Candy.
That's something.
Some of yours we've done.
No, calendars.
Maybe on communication.
I did last time, we also had something about a capital project which was coming up. You know, there's not, we're not going to give worry about it possibly.
I was going to say maybe something for the kids.
Based on how they dive on candy bowls of open houses.
But I feel like all the other tables have something.
When you deal with, I'd be able to.
No, she doesn't.
She can't give away our kids.
What's that? What about the cake?
Oh, yeah.
Are we going to give them?
We have done it in the past.
I thought that went well.
Yeah. I mean, they'll turn it down.
Undoubtedly. Okay.
And I had one other. Diane and I went to board officer's training two weeks ago.
Was it two weeks?
I think it was two weeks. And learned all sorts of really great stuff, but one of the things that a lot of the board presidents and other board members who talked about was having sort of a weekly memo from the superintendent, not on board meeting packet weeks because we already get a memo in our packets, but just sort of a, here's what's happened in the district this week, just nothing that we have to act on, purely informational. We wanted to get a sense from you guys if you were interested in getting that kind of information, if it's just one more thing, you don't want to read, you know.
This would be from the superintendent?
Yes.
So maybe we should ask the superintendent what his.
We did have this task.
Yeah, it was kind of a gentle arm twist. I don't mind doing it. I mean, I don't need an extra task, but if the board would find it helpful and people are in fact going to read it, I don't mind doing it. And you don't have to hurt my feelings. If you'd rather not, I'm fine with that. So if, if certain the board wants, I'm more than willing to do it. But I don't want to, I don't want to do it just for the sake of making myself feeling good. I've got plenty of stuff.
Should we try it as like a one-month pilot?
You could do it as a trial. It doesn't work for us. It doesn't work.
Sure.
The superintendent and the board members that did it all found it very useful. That's why we, we just overwhelmed and we talked. Maybe it was useful for us.
Type of things do you anticipate going on there from week to week?
I don't know. I've done it yet.
I'm just saying, I mean, is there really?
I, I mean, that maybe is a good reason to pilot it. Maybe it'll wind up being a paragraph and everybody will say, well, I, I don't know. Let's, I mean, I'm willing, certainly willing to, to give it a try. And I think I'll have a better sense when I actually sit down and start to reflect on the week just passed. And if it's a dull, boring week, then it'll be real short. And if there's a bunch of stuff, and let's, let's, I'm, I'm certainly willing to give a shot. And you'll, I'll ask you to be honest and say, really isn't worth the work. And then I'll be totally fine with that.
And I think, I think, you know, it would be a confidential memo to report. It's not.
Oh, yeah. Because there may be some things that I would not want to put on, or I make my own ads or our own social media, but I would want you guys to, to know about it. So it would kind of be, I think, a, like, kind of what you get in your board packet, maybe a little briefer, but that kind of, hey, this is coming up, this happened, just the heads up, but that kind of stuff.
It could be things that you might get asked about and you didn't know, like, it's your day, you're not the Joe, like, the power went out. You know, someone may say, why was the power out? You get your memo, then you know, a tree fell and you have that. Something small like that to, you know, all the things that go on, but then they only meet every two weeks. So by that time, it's kind of happening over.
Could reiterate the committees for the following week in the times as reminders.
Good place for a reminder.
Hey, I could use some help with this.
Exactly. Be careful what you suggest.
I don't want to give her another task. I'll take another task. She's got plenty of it.
If it's in that memo though, you might not reiterate like the meeting tomorrow.
I, I don't.
Take this half then. Yeah, no, I know, I know, I know. Believe me.
Yeah, be careful what you're looking for. Okay. So we'll give it a shot and see how it works out.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, I think I have another. That was one of my others. So we had the BOSI's presentation tonight. So at some point did we discuss that as a board, do we have an opinion on if we're for it or against it? You know, we talked about how they communicate it or we just kind of, that's the information everyone decide on their own? I mean, you know, that is money that would come out of our, you know, if we're cutting money, that's $50,000 that would have to come out of our money. So I'm just wondering, we've never been through this process before. Do we, do we give an opinion or do we just?
First of all, you mean that?
Well, we've never been through a vote like this.
I mean, I think, you know, I think the reality is if, if this board is going to take a position one way or the other, I think, I think that could have a significant impact on the outcome. I think if this board says, yes, we think it's, it's a worthwhile project, there is going to be a cost, but over the, the long haul, you know, it's going to provide better opportunities for our kids. And we're talking about 25 of our kids, pretty, and that's pretty, that's a pretty steady. It's not just a blip. Oh, yeah. No, no. And. Actually, it's kind of on the low side. It would be a good thing to support in spite of the fact that it's going to have a, a financial impact, although, you know, long-term, you know, in 20 years, it's going to be cost neutral. I mean, I think, well, on that conversely, I think if we say, you know what, we think it's a bad idea for our district, I think anybody who may be wanting to, to vote would take that pretty seriously.
I agree with you. I think, you know, they are our kids, so if we were in favor of it, let's say, then we should be making a push for it. It's not something people are going to come out and vote for, you know, on their own. So, you know, I, can we take a position? I mean, we can't on our own budget. Can we take a position on that? I don't know.
Well, I think we can. We expressed an opinion after the last presentation, which was less on the project and more on, this was kind of short on detail and we weren't really too happy about it. And of course, that wound up being on the front page of the, well, I mean, be prepared for that, one way or the other. And maybe, you know, maybe the thing to do would be, I'm not trying to kick the can down the road, but we just had this presentation this evening. Maybe there's an opportunity to look at some of the stuff they gave out, to give it some thought. And, and if, if the board, as a board, feels like taking a position either supportive or not, we can maybe discuss that at a, you know, our next meeting and say, okay, we feel this way. And I think we have a right to say this is our opinion as a board, we support it, we don't support it. I don't think, excuse me, I don't think we have to take a stand, but I think if we want to, I think we're certainly well within our rights to take a position.
I, I just want to remind us that Steve asked for some additional information that they said they would provide us. You know, since we're getting that information, we should, you know, evaluate it before we make a decision on what we do.
Tom, oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, I mean, the big question in my mind is if we can get the state government to exempt the cost, our portion of the cost from the tax cap has a big impact on how much in favor I am of the project. I mean, I think it's a great project, but, you know, it's still taking money potentially away from the rest of our, our students, other than the 25 that are going to BOSI's. And I mean, there's a big question there in my mind about whether it's worth it or not.
Well, that, that's a great point. And I might suggest, you're having said that, that maybe it's an opportunity to do a little lobbying for that now, before the November election and say, you know what, we, we like the project, but we have some concerns about the potential cost and we strongly urge our legislators to push the governor to approve legislation for this. And maybe there's a way to leverage that without saying we wouldn't support if it didn't happen. You don't have to say that now, but it would be a lot in, in the interest of every school district, if that were to happen, in order to provide this opportunity for our kids without the risk of disadvantaging, disadvantageing other programs financially. So again, that's kind of another little spin on how we might respond in the short term and say, hey, get on the stick, get this darn thing passed because it is going to impact us and our kids.
I wonder if that's something, Mark, through the Dutchess School Board, what's the other? Dutchess School Board?
County School Boards.
Dutchess County School Boards. You know, maybe a joint letter from, you know, if everybody felt the same way, like two legislators saying, you know, I'm sure everyone feels the same way, at least about the tax cap part, portion of it.
Yeah. Yeah. Each component district sent a letter and Dutchess County School Board sent a letter. I mean, pretty soon.
And that meeting is on October 4th, right, Mark?
Yes, I was going to bring that up. It's our other section as well. There's other, no more discussion on this. I'll go on to that. So I just want to remind everybody that October 4th, the first meeting for the year of the Dutchess County School Board Association, there will be a presentation on the Lower Hudson Education Coalition, which is another place where it's a question of tax cap exemption for the BOSI's project could possibly come up where they have more lobbying power than the county does.
Oh, yeah. I'd, I'd be interested, just based on our last headline on that topic, I'd be interested in knowing what that organization would do for us on this issue were we to decide to, to join. Kind of a, put your money where your money's going.
There you go.
Type of situation. Just, just saying.
Yeah. Test.
And if I may, I'll give a quick report from the Park Committee. As you know, I represent the district on the Park Committee. So the new pavilion is just about finished. There is a couple of punchless items still to be resolved, but the, more or less the pavilion is finished. So I urge you to take a look back there in the back of the park at the pavilion. There's supposed to be a grand opening being planned for sometime in November with lots of public officials who had involvement in getting the funding for that pavilion. Also, the Park Committee is, at the request of the town, going to be taking on a review of potential renovation of the pool and the pool facilities and the rest of the park facility that surround the pool. So that'll be upcoming in the next few months. I think we'll be looking to do an RFP for a consultant to start looking into that.
I would just dovetail on that and say that whatever happens with the pool will impact our swimming program because during the warmer months, our kids are practicing there. So, you know, be something we, I think we would have a vested interest in having that facility be usable and available depending on what the, the town boards plans might, might be for.
Mark, the, I actually, this weekend I happened to go to the trails with the new dog and the pavilion's beautiful. It's really quite pretty to look at. What, what's in it? I know there are restrooms, but.
Yeah, so there's restrooms in there and there is also a, an area for concession stands, which still funding for the equipment to put in the concession stand is being looked for, but there's to be a concession stand in there. But it's really a restroom facility for the, for the trail system and also a concession stand for the fields that will be adjacent whenever they get constructed. stand for the fields that'll be adjacent whenever they get constructed.
Really, it's a nice, nice building. Anyone else? Okay. We can move on to action items. Does anyone want to remove anything from consent agenda? All right. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I would like to thank the many, many, many donors that are included on this consent agenda.
Yeah, we had a lot this time.
Really amazing, yeah. Rhinebeck Science Foundation, Rhinebeck PTSO, Dr. Wing, Donors Choose on behalf of Katie Torres, the Lombardo Family, Adams Ferry Farm, and the Community Foundations of the Hudson Valley, all have supported programs in the district.
Okay, then this one? Oh, and Gabrielle Hill.
Nations of Flags.
There is.
Donors Choose.
Gabrielle Hill and.
Did Wolf and.
And Chandler Ray Cox.
Thanks, I'm sure you're voting.
Thank you. Yeah, that, it's really, really wonderful how much this community supports our kids. Thank you. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda? That vote is unanimous. Six. Item 6.3, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the civil service appointment of Serena Mathews to the position of school monitor, 3.75 hours per day, with a 26-week probationary period effective September 12, 2018, at a salary of Step 1, $17.18 per hour, in accordance with the ante-salaried schedule for 2017-18.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passed, unanimous. May I have a motion to approve modifications to the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent of support services terms and conditions of employment effective July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2020?
Move to table?
Well, first, we move it, and then we'll.
Oh, sorry. So, so moved.
Second.
Move to table?
May I have a second?
Second.
So moved. We are tabling the.
You have to take the vote, don't you?
Oh, so, all those in favor of tabling? It's unanimous, that motion passed. May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's 2018-19 administrative goals?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Lisa.
Okay. So, um, this is always challenging, for me, anyway, because I feel as though the, the indicators of progress and the implementation strategies are kind of, they, they rise and fall on the, the strength of the goals to which they're attached. And, you know, in some respects, the, the proof of a good goal is that you have measurable strategies and indicators. So I, I want to turn to the, I want to turn to the contract negotiation goal first. So that's Goal 4. So, Joe, what, to what extent should we be judging the, the performance or the accomplishment of these goals based on the outcome of the negotiations as opposed to the progress of the negotiations? That, if that question makes sense?
I think so. I, I think ultimately, the, the judge of the, the successful outcome is whether you approve the contract or not.
Mm-hmm.
The board doesn't have to approve a contract. You have to vote on it, as well as, does the particular bargaining unit has to vote to accept it? So if, if a contract's negotiated that the board, the majority of the board can't support, then you'll vote down, I would expect. Now, I, I don't say that glibly, because I also realize, and I think we all realize, there's, there are some ramifications to not approving a goal, especially one, that's already been approved by the bargaining unit, but that's the ultimate test, is, is the board support that? And, you know, the other part of it is, I don't think, for either of these two bargaining units, or any bargaining unit at any time, we're going to get to a, a ratify, a memorandum of agreement that's been signed off, and that the board doesn't know anything about what's going on. I mean, that, that's the first time you, you know what's in there, there's something wrong with, more globally with the process, and, you know, that's, that's never happened. I don't anticipate that happening, but.
But, but, but let me ask specifically. So, um, the indicators of progress you have for this goal are a signed memorandum of agreement for each unit, and we're talking about two units, because the RTA's already done.
Correct.
Ratification of agreement by each bargaining unit and the BOE, and production and distribu- distribution of contract documents reflecting each agreement. So we all know, and you know better than any of the rest of us, that it doesn't always, that these discussions don't always result in these sort of sub-goals being met within a given year.
Right.
Sometimes they cross over years.
Sure.
So is it reasonable for us to see as an indicator of progress for this goal, for example, having a signed memorandum of agreement, of agreement for each unit? I mean, if we get to May, and we don't have a signed memorandum of agreement for each unit, should we consider this goal not to have been accomplished? Or should we be setting indicators that are more in keeping with our experience of how these negotiations often go? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly how to answer that question without thinking about it a little bit. And in fact, we're in a, we're in a process with one of those two units that's already spilled into, you know, we're, we're into the next year, okay? So, and there's, there's no guarantees, but we also know that over the years, we've had goals that did not get wrapped up in a neat bow by the end of the year, that sometimes goals, we have to be, I think, honest enough with ourselves and say, through no particular person's fault, and not through the superintendent's fault, we don't have a contract. It's a bigger, it's a bigger issue that transcends what I've done to try to get us to that, but it certainly is an indicator of progress. I mean, if those things are happening, then we should have a contract by the end of this goal cycle. There's no guarantee.
Well, but isn't it even more indefinite than that? Because the, the ultimate reaching of this goal is not completely within the power of the administration to accomplish.
That's true.
So what I'm, I guess where I'm getting at with this is if, I, I think, I urge a rethinking as to the indicators of progress, at the very least. The implementation strategies, I think, are actually more reasonable, considering, you know, the way these negotiations sometimes go. But to rethink the indicators of progress, so that when we're evaluating how well the administration worked towards these goals at the end of the school year, we're not saying, for example, the administration failed to progress us to this goal. Now, one might take issue and say that that's not a reasonable response on the part of the board, considering the things that you just said. But if these indicators are going to be meaningful, they should be needable. They should be things that we can actually do, and that aren't like the ultimate accomplishment. Unlike, say, the goal on long-range planning, which is, you know, get to a draft, a draft of the report by the end of the school year. That's something that's within our ability to accomplish. You know, what happens after that will be for next year's, or to determine when they set their goals. But that's something we can do. I'm not sure this is something that we can do. And so I would suggest, maybe you should be rethinking whether those are the things that you should be offering to hold the administration to at this point. That was the one that really jumped out. They, I, I'm, this cycle especially, it hit very strongly, that since we worked so hard to try to create measurable goals, that we should create realistic and needable indicators and strategies. Otherwise, they're not really very useful.
I understand what you're saying, and I, I can certainly take, take this back, and specifically towards that goal, like, you know, I'd be willing to rework them. I guess, you know, I was spinning mine off the board's goal, and it actually puts the board's goal in the same place. I mean, does the board fail in its goal if we don't have signed contracts by the end of the year? I mean, kind of, kind of says that.
The board, the board goal says, the board is committed to reaching timely and fiscally responsible contract settlements. Timely is not by the end of the year. Timely is in the appropriate time, considering what all of our requirements are, and how closely we, how close we can get to them. I certainly don't feel like it's fair to hold the administration to a requirement that we're not allowed to, so.
Well, I mean, it's a pleasure to the board. I'm more than willing to, you know, two more weeks is not going to be a deal breaker for, I mean, we've had goals adopted way later in the school year, both by the board and thereafter by the superintendent. So, yeah, I mean, I, again, I, the board would have to say, yeah, Joe, why don't you give it a shot?
Sure.
And if that's what the board wants me to do, I'm totally fine with that.
I'm just throwing it out there, you know? If everybody disagrees with me, then.
Does anybody else have any comments? You know, things that they thought of in reading these, Steve?
I mean, I just think that that one's a tough one, because I think it, it's outside of the other three, right? The other three are more, you know, kind of district curriculum, you know, where that one is more meant to be that this is a focus, that we're not, not thinking about these bargaining units. So I, I kind of agree with Lisa that the wording is important, but I don't think it, it means the same thing, that if it doesn't get done, that it was a failure on anybody's part, because it is just a, a process that, you know, takes time to go through. I would be happy if you just took our goal and made that your goal. I think that's general enough that, you know, it would be, would be fine.
Yeah, I was going to say that, you know, I think what Lisa says makes sense, but set in a realistic context of how contract negotiations work, I don't think it, it really will necessarily play out when it comes time to, you know, evaluate meeting of the goals. So I don't know that it's necessary. I mean, I think it's, it's a good point, but I don't feel strongly that it's necessary. I wouldn't be against changing it, but I don't feel strongly for it.
Diane?
Well, first, I didn't really have time to go through these very well. But I think the real problem with this is that the, both of these units are in different places. You know, when you talk about the non-instruct, that's kind of out of Joe's hands at this point. There's not too much he can do at this point. It's, it's in its process. Whereas with the administrators, you know, he's going to be leading those negotiations, and that, that is, it's different. I mean, that will more fall on him and how that, how that works. So that, to me, is where I'm struggling a little bit, just because they're, they're not in the same place. I mean, if we were just starting, then they would be in the same place, but they're not. So that's kind of why it doesn't really line up for both groups. And then what happens if one is settled and one's not? What does that mean for this? Fifty-fifty, like, you kind of, what is that?
Well, I, you know, I, I would say, and I, I appreciate Steve's con, Steve's con, I think I appreciate it, but what Steve said, I mean, it is kind of a different goal. It, I think, when we developed this, we admitted or agreed that it was aspirational, that it was something we needed to put out there publicly for political reasons, if, if no other reason, okay? That we, we shouldn't just ignore the fact that we have these two contracts that need to be, need to be settled. I certainly don't want to be vilified if we don't have both contracts. Well, and I, I'm sorry, but I've been there. So I don't want to be vilified if something that is largely out of my control doesn't come to pass, any more than I expect to be crowned as the greatest thing since sliced bread, if these things are all wrapped up by the end of the year. I mean, I'm not looking for one or the other, but I certainly don't want to throw myself on a sword if, if we don't meet a timeline. So I would appreciate the opportunity, if it's all the same to the rest of you, to, to see if I can massage that a little bit. Maybe I'll come up with something better by next time. Maybe I won't. I mean, no guarantees, but I'll give it a shot. And again, I don't think putting it off for two weeks is going to be like, oh my God, I can't believe we don't have those superintendent's goals done by now. That's, that's what I'm suggesting, but it's up, it's up to you guys.
Joe, just another thought.
Yeah.
I think on this goal, I think, you know, you're right, the indicator shouldn't be like, you know, did the end result, did it get signed? But more, you know, what are you personally going to do? Because this is your goal, right? So what things would you be doing?
Yeah.
To try to get to this goal? I think that's more the path. The end result is certainly these things.
Well, and it's a different kind of outcome. I mean, certainly, getting a signed memorandum of agreement, an outcome.
Yeah.
It's measurable. It's, pretty much cut and dry. You do, or you don't, but maybe within the context of these goals, maybe it's, it's not fair, realistic, I don't know. I mean, I like to think it'll happen, but.
And especially since they're in such, as Diane said, such completely different places, where, you know, the ante-contract, we're just waiting for schedules and things, we're completely out of that.
Yeah, and there's a third party now that's a big player.
Right, right. So it's, you know, it's not really anything that you can do or not do that's going to make that goal happen or not happen. Where the administrative one, I think, there is a little bit more skin in the game, if you will, that we can get that done. So maybe you want to split them up? Maybe a thought, I mean, play with it.
I'll, you know, I'll have an adult beverage and.
I'll have two.
So thank you for the input. I, I appreciate it.
Liz or Mark, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I like where it's going, actually. Okay.
I agree. Okay.
All right. I would just like to add that, you know, since you're taking the time, I haven't spent enough time with this, I really read them on my phone.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, if you look at all of them, and with an eye toward that, what am I going to do to propel the district to briefly meet the board district goals? I don't know that would be.
And that having said, I would, I would ask the board members if you have any other feedback. I mean, don't wait till I come back here and say, oh, by the way, that one is kind of, kind of lame, too. You need, you know, I'm just being frank. If you have some feedback, send it my way.
Perfectly.
Either call me or email me, and, okay, thanks, I, I got it.
And only one beverage per goal.
What's that?
Only one beverage per goal.
I thought you were going to commit to that. I may need multiples.
And here, here's the issue I'm dealing with. He's not going to want to do it tonight when he goes home. So he's going to look at it tomorrow at nine o'clock in the morning. Is he going to have an adult beverage at nine o'clock in the morning?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that.
I don't think so.
I wouldn't do that. I know, I know.
So Joe, maybe when you make your tweets, you can send it out so that you.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, so that next time we can put it to.
Yes, yep.
All right. So then, I guess, may I have a motion to table? Item 6.5.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion is passed. Let's move to the table. 6.6, motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Lucy Munger to provide teacher aid services for one to two hours per day for each day of modified volleyball practices and/or home contests as necessary and appropriate for the fall 2018 interscholastic athletic season, effective September 11, 2018, in accordance with the 2017 ante-salaried.
So moved. Second. They threw me for a minute.
Just have a question.
Just have a question, should this be 1718 or 19?
That's what I was looking at.
No, 1718.
In 1718, we're still operating with 1718 contract.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah.
That's right.
Until we negotiate a new one.
See board go for.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, motion passes. Um, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act to Mary Fleischauer to commence on October 31, 2018, with such leave be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability, as certified by a physician in writing through January 1, 2019, or thereof, to be accepted for prude sick leave?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Extentions, Fleischauer's standing, uh, that motion passes. Uh, may I have a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of discussing the employment history of Tiffenham first?
That's, that's the best time.
Yeah, so moved, second. All those in favor? That is unanimous, that motion passes, we're moving into executive session.